We do have nine o'clock and I'd like to call the November twentieth meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners to order this time and acknowledge that we do have a quorum. I will lead us in a brief invocation, after which Commissioner Palmer will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. So at this time, if you desire, pray with me, please. Merciful God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet here today. We thank you for the beautiful day. Thank you for our health and our strength to be here. And we pray for your divine guidance as we enter this meeting today, that our decisions will be good and right and in your favor. We pray for those that are protecting our freedoms today, those that are in our military, those that are in our emergency services, our law enforcement, all who protect and provide for us the opportunity of such meetings. We pray for all those that were just mentioned, as we go into the holiday season, that they will be potentially serving the public during a time which we may be with our families and celebrating. Be with them, protect them, and give them guidance through those days. And again, we seek your guidance today, in holy name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to invite you all to a safe place this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
Have a motion.
Have a motion, discussion. If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. At this point, in our regularly scheduled meetings, we do have a ten-minute public comment period set aside. And be sure to remember that you are addressing the entire board and not individual board members. And be cognizant of the other speakers. We do have seven...
We have six.
Six, six to speak this morning, so we will allow two minutes per speaker.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. So who's our first speaker?
The first speaker is Andrea Childers of Blackberry Lane, Rougemont.
You guys have made me a public speaker. I've never been a public speaker before.
Congratulations.
Getting good at it. Thanks. My name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in Person County for thirty-one years, and I'd like to address a few issues pertaining to the Mariah Energy Center. Over the past month, I keep hearing over and over again that the Cary, that Cary has a natural gas storage facility, and how wonderful it is. To compare the Mariah Energy Center is a bit of a misnomer. They both will store natural gas. That's about as far as the comparison goes. The facility in Cary was built in nineteen seventies. That holds less than one-fifth of the proposed Mariah Energy Center. The subdivisions that now are around it were built after it was, which means most people that live around it made the choice to move there and live there. We did not have that choice. These people did not have the explosives going off five hundred feet from their homes. They did not have to deal with the trucks loaded down with gravel, concrete, explosives, and God knows what else on their two-lane little country roads. But, most important, the water. Residents of Cary have water provided to them by the city, so that if something catastrophic does go wrong, the residents of Cary will have clean drinking, bathing, and cooking water. Whereas, if the three-hundred-and-sixty-plus-thousand gallons of water are removed from our aquifer at a rate faster than it can replenish, it will get, it will crash and cave in. Or, the chemicals that they remove from the natural gas pollute our wells. Congratulations. You have just made Person County residents among the two million Americans that do not have clean drinking water. Your constituents deserve better than that. We face the very real possibility that damage to our wells and our homes will come, and I still cannot get a clear, consistent answer to who is liable for fixing that if that would happen. I would think you, as our representatives, would want to know the answer to that question. I've also seen the word transparency a lot lately. We've looked back for the last two years of county commissioner meetings, and not one mention of Dominion Energy, not one inch mention of natural gas when it comes to the Mariah Energy Center. Duke's brought it up, and we know Duke's brought it up because they want to change their power plants, but nothing pertaining to this. And according to Dominion Energy's own timeline, they have been planning this since the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two. That's two years, and not one mention have we heard of this. That, commissioners, is the exact opposite of transparency. This center is in no way good for Person County. Twelve permanent jobs, damage to residents' homes, wells, long-term possible damage to infrastructure. Residents of Person County are not even given the option to purchase natural gas to heat their own homes. Zero-point-eight-five percent of your annual budget, this is what you're doing that for. This is a bad choice for Person County. I appeal to this board to look at the science, take some time to get answers to the questions that I presented to you on November sixth, and report back to us before you go ahead and resign this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If I can have IT reset the timer for two minutes. Thank you. Next person, Bernard Lampert of Mount Harmony Church Road, Rougemont.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bernard Lampert. I live fairly close to the Mariah Energy Center on Mount Harmony Church Road. I'd like to start a little bit different. Nobody here is against economic development. We need economic development in Person County. What we don't need is a Mariah Energy Center. We need development that has sustainable growth, that provides jobs, that a pay bell, that provide benefits, so Person County can grow. This monstrosity will only add about twelve jobs, and so is mainly coming from outside Person County. There's absolutely no benefit to Person County and to Person County residents of this installation. I don't want to go into the environmental damage and so on. It's been covered. I base a little more focus on the economic benefit. What is the economic benefit for Person County? Twelve jobs, a little bit of tax payment. Now, you need to offset that against the loss of residential real estate in the surrounding area. Nobody's going to buy a house there. Nobody's going to move there to buy a house. So where's the benefit? Has there been a really detailed, independent financial, and fully burdened financial analysis done on that? I looked for it. I can't find anything. So that leads me to believe there's something amiss, and something is not fully covered. That's not what we need. We need benefits for Person County and Person County residents. This energy center will serve everybody else but Person County. This pipeline has two takeoffs, according to Dominion Energy. One in STEM and one in Roxborough. The amount coming out of those two takeoffs is miniscule. It's negligible. It, it... Oh. What was that?
The time.
Anyway, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we change the sound on?
Keeps everybody awake.
Sorry, excuse me. Next, we have Carolyn Manjo.
Good morning. It was in September when we first heard about economic development in this plan, and we were then told by a Person County employee that it's a done deal. And in the meantime, the rest of us, many, just ordinary citizens, have been learning more and more and more about the dangers, dangers of an LNG facility. And, but, I'm also telling you that I began looking at your comprehensive land use plan, your ordinances against the storage of hazardous materials, and, and also particularly your ordinance for solar energy. And what I learned from that was that you, you really do want to do other things besides economic development. You really do care about the safety of your people and your land. And so what, what I would like to just say is that, though I personally really honestly do pray that you will not put this LNG facility in our area, that you'll find a safer place for it, if you feel it's important, but I really do think that the best thing that could be done would be to take this solar ordinance energy plant, just in case this really is a done deal, and, and make this plan, a similar plan on LNG. I think Chris Bowley can do that. I know it would take a couple months. You'd have to have a hearing, but I think that this is the kind of thing that you could do. You could add to it the particular dangers of solar energy, like the blasting in the wells and the, the idea that it has to be in the most worst-case scenario. All that needs to be in there. But I think it would show us that, as Person County citizens, that in the future, you are concerned about our safety, about our land, about your children and your, your children and your grandchildren. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Diane Lesman of Elderberry Lane, Rougemont.
Good morning. My name is Diane Lesman at one oh six Elderberry Lane. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Most of us understand we're here on this planet for a limited time. We don't own the land we stand on. We are stewards of the earth. Some do great good while they're here. Most of us at least ascribe to do no harm. If you approve the Dominion Project, you do great harm to the four-hundred-and-sixty-five acres it sits on, below, upon, and above the earth, contributing to the already desperate conditions worldwide that are aggravated by the continued use of fossil fuel. We're told of tax revenue of twenty million over twenty-five years. Our math is a little different, but it's the same point. Eight-hundred thousand a year is about one percent increase using numbers from the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. If any of you can tell us which line items in the county budget will benefit from these funds, please share. I received an email response from the anonymous Mariah Energy Center project team at Dominion when I asked what the forty-three million in business development would look like. The response was, "As far as the forty-three million in economic impact, this amount is generally includes labor income," these must be great jobs, "labor income, and income through workers spending at local businesses." But we've been told by Dominion these are specialized construction jobs, most likely filled by people outside of Person County. It's reasonable to project that these folks come to work with food for the day, go home, spend close to home, pay rent, mortgages, and property taxes elsewhere, and Person County will see little of it. If you know of even one or two viable projects, new businesses coming to Person County as a result of the Dominion Project, please share. The construction materials, the vehicles used to transport them, and the construction equipment are huge. I'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Tracy Sexton of Berman Clayton Road, Timberlake.
Three asks. Ask number one, has Dominion Energy conducted an environmental impact study that has, and has the study been reviewed by independent agencies, including the North Carolina Department of Natural Resources? Has that environmental impact study been made available to the public? And then, how many millions of dollars has Dominion Energy set aside in escrow for future environmental impact mitigations? And number three, in the process, how long, how have long-term environmental impacts on land, water, and air in Person County been factored into this decision-making process? Economics are more than just the dollars. It's the long-term off-balance sheet values of the beauty, safety, and health of the land and people upon which we draw our lives. So economic decisions that count only the money are short-sighted.
Thank you.
Last speaker we have is PJ Gentry of Bird Creek Hurdle Mills.
of bring up the DSS situation that you're going to be facing in a public hearing coming up about the restructuring. The handout before you was something that you were given August second, twenty-twenty-one. It was recently reported in the newspaper that the board, members of the board weren't aware of the options that were available to you at the time of restructuring. This thirty-five-page scenario came from the School of Government at UNC, had all the same options in there that you're looking at right now. So this is just a reminder that you have seen this information before, maybe just a little refresher for you all. The reason, at the time that this was presented to you in twenty-twenty-one to merge the Department of Health and the DSS was because at the time, the Board of Commissioners did not want to take on the responsibility of overseeing the DSS. So the board at that time voted three to two no not to consider the merge. But all three options were given to the full board at that time. So I would just like you to go through this again, because this information hasn't changed. In fact, it was first presented to the Board of Commissioners in twenty-twelve. There was only one of you on the board at that time, but this was available back in twenty-twelve. Since then, thirty-nine counties have had and consolidated the DSS boards, so that they can have some oversight and control as to what's going on. The other piece of paper there is the recent lawsuit that happened up in Murphy County, I believe, where the Board of Commissioners has to pay a forty, I think it's a forty-two-million-dollar lawsuit, a judgment in favor of the plaintiffs against the DSS. And this is going to cost, the beeper's going to go off, I'm going to finish up. This is going to be passed on to the taxpayers to pay it. We don't need to kick the can down the road. This really needs to be addressed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. That's all, right?
Yes, sir.
That's it's done. Item number one on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, approval of the consent agenda as presented. One thing there, Manager Kathy, I'm looking at item F.
Yes.
Award contract to benefits consultant. Considering the importance of this particular item to our county employees, we're all immensely concerned about the benefits they receive and the care they receive and their well-being, I would ask that that item be removed from the consent agenda and placed on a future board meeting to have more information delivered to the board. In previous years, we have had vendors present to this board, and then the board made a decision related to that. So again, with the importance of that, and that's every employee that we have included, I think it's imperative that we, we as a board have more information going forward to, to make a sound decision related to benefits consultants. So I'd like to have that one removed. Okay, do we have a motion with that, with that one changed?
Motion to approve with item F removed. Any other discussion? If you're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. New business, item number two, presentation by Amy Hornberg, presentation for the annual comprehensive financial report.
Our auditor's not here yet.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't know. Okay, we'll move along. We'll put that one aside, move to number three, which is presentation of Dr. Rodney Peterson related to funding requests for Person County schools. Dr. Peterson.
I'm here. Morning.
Morning.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the county staff does and what you do every day. Good morning, Commissioners, Manager Kathy. Not sure exactly what you want to hear from us this morning. I do have Ms. Tillman and Mr. Torian available, if you want comments from them as well. I'd be happy to share with you kind of the timeline that we're under and where we're at. And at the end of that, if you've got any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. On nine, I guess it was nine-twelve, we had the bid opening, and on nine-fourteen, our board approved the eleven-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-dollar contract. With any major building event that you have, we did, we did have several alternates that were put into place just in case the bids came in, overbid. And one of those alternates that we had was the phase-one work for the stadium and the concession stand to make those ADA accessible. Because of the base bid and the various alternates, our board did not include the stadium nor the concession stand in their, in their approval of the bid to the local vendor Legacy. Since then, Legacy builders, along with the architect, have done in value engineering of the project as the sole proprietary person that's going to be doing the work. And what I presented to you this morning, or what I gave last week, was the VE portion of that. And what you'll find is that with the original allowances on the contingency, which was one million thirty-two thousand dollars, that Legacy Builders is able to do the stadium portion of the original bid, but it would only leave them roughly a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in contingency for the total project. What we requested, once we got this information, was if we could do the bleachers, whether or not the Commissioners would have the willingness to include the additional funds to go ahead and do the concession stand. Concession stand came in under the bid at roughly two-point-three, three, two-point-three million dollars. Questions were asked of us, why did we... Uh, questions were asked of us, why did we request the three million? Is to supplant the contingency for the total project. The total, the total project for the concession stand and the stadium was roughly four million, uh, nine hundred and twenty thousand. And what we were able to be able to do with the VE engineering is with the three million is to be able to do the total project as a whole. And so that's what our board is requesting this morning, um, if it, if you see fit to do so. Keep in mind that, uh, the other part of the contingency is that when our board voted not to include the alternate, um, that now the, the ones that did the bidding on the project, the subcontractors are no longer held to that bidding process because it extended to sixty days. And that was the other reason why we needed additional contingency in case it came back greater than what it was with the original bid.
So thi- this is more than restrooms.
Yes, this will be your, well, you got to remember too, let me just back up. Anything we do on, on a school project has to have DPI approval. Back in the day, and I would say the day, uh, as early or late as fifteen, I believe, the last concession stand we did, we didn't have to have anyone's approval except for the local, uh, county or local county inspector. That is no longer, uh, the rules now. Everything has to go. So if we attach anything to the existing, uh, concession stand that we have, we have to bring it up to standard. The current building code is anything over five hundred square feet has to have accessibility. Our current press box is five hundred and thirteen square feet, so we would have to bring it up to standard according to the DPI memo we received on the fourteenth. So yes, it would include, uh, a retrofit or an upgrade of the current concession stand that we would have. It would have a left and a right, uh, boys and girls bathroom, and then the press box itself would be pushed back to grade on the back wall so that you can literally walk in, uh, to the press box area. Uh, those of you who've been a part of football or any kind of, uh, sports, you know that most press boxes have crow's next, crow's nest to it. Uh, we did check with our local, uh, building inspector. That would not have to be, uh, accessible, and our DPI has said that we refer to them for that, whether or not we have to meet code for that. So yes, uh, you would have press box, concession stand, the build-out of the bathrooms, and everything would be pushed all the way back to the back wall.
And thank you, here's, here's a situation where there's no question of need from the ADA standpoint. I remember discussions about restrooms at that facility as far back as probably two thousand and five or six, maybe, close to that, so it's not a new topic. It's not a newly developed need. It's, um, it's clear, it's obvious. The question here is, I guess, from the board's perspective, is funding.
Yeah, where's, my question's, where's the money going to come from?
Right, okay. So it's not about need, it's about.
What the board has recommended to, is recommending to the Commissioners as part of the total thirty-eight million dollar project is that we would encumber, if the board is willing to front as part of the total project, we would, we would encumber the funds through the thirty-eight million that we had talked about for the total ADA projects that we have in the county. We would keep it within that budget that was discussed earlier.
Comments, uh, Manager?
Sure, so we have looked at that within the context of our debt model, and the debt model would support a capital outlay in this fiscal year of the three million dollars for this request, along with reducing the next debt issuance, which is scheduled for fiscal year twenty-five by three million dollars. It would not have a negative impact on the debt model.
More members, questions, comments? Just in reviewing these architectural drawings.
Yes, sir.
There's mention of a roadway.
That's one of the alternates. I don't know if you mentioned the, I don't know if you're talking about the roadway that's behind.
To get to the concession.
Yes, behind the school current. That's the current road behind the school.
So that's not going to have to be, it's already there.
It's already there, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Right. But there is an alternate as part of the total project where we have an emergency access lane that would be coming in from the far, I don't know, you know, if yes, it would be the west parking lot or the north parking lot that would feed down to the, the football field. So there is, there is as to, as one part of the project, there is a road access going to be provided.
That would be on the tennis court side?
That, yeah, it would be the tennis court side, bloated tennis court. And then the lower, um, parking lot for the school would be taken out to get the permanent space that non-permanent, well, yeah, permanent space that we need for the total project because we will be adding non-permanent space to the, to the school. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does.
As a city ordinance.
I know the grounds very well, thank you. I do have one more question. What is the need for expansion of a practice field?
That's, that's going to be a, um, I don't know the term. That's, that would be the gift of taking away the bottom parking lot to get the non-permanible space. So that would be just the extension of the practice field, and then our softball field under Title IX, it could be a tot- of actual softball field for the girls. And we will not use the softball field like we currently do for football. That's a whole nother conversation I'd be willing to have, but.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, it's.
Catch that part of it?
Yeah, it's a gift as we take out the parking lot. That would be the gift that we would be able to, be able to have the softball field be a true softball field now.
And one more.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Are we looking at taking out all of the concrete, existing concrete of the stadium and replacing every bit of it?
Everything on the stadium is on the ground right this point. If you walk it, you'll notice it, it's buckled in several spots, and you're at a ten-degree angle watching the.
Gaps.
Football field, yep. So yes, it would be totally replaced. And then the two bottom bleachers will be replaced, and it would be one element. I think at twenty-six hundred would be the capacity at that point.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Peterson, the eleven million that, uh, we have given you, has, have we started that project at all? And if we have, I don't, I will know, but if we haven't, when's the start date for that?
Today.
It started today?
It will start today.
Awesome, okay. So now with the, uh, project, you want to add with the concessions and bathrooms and all that, when would that start?
Depending on funding, uh, if we get approved of that, it would be a part of, it would be a part of the stadium, and that will start ASAP.
Will it be completed by next season?
My understanding through Legacy is that they can have the bleachers completed prior to graduation.
Graduation twenty-four.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a very important date. That's when my son graduates.
You worked hard to get him there, didn't you?
Yes, absolutely.
Tomorrow's an unknown.
Absolutely.
Say again, the assurances we might have to keep this project within the ballpark of the numbers that you've talked about.
I guess the logic would have said, come to Manager Kathy with the two point, what, three, five, five? The reason why we're asking for the three million is because we want to have at least a six to seven hundred thousand on a contingency in case we have issues that come up. The great example had, uh, a very veteran person that was part of the original project at the high school call and said, you realize what's happening at high school, don't you? And I said, what are you talking about? And then I got the history of the granite veins of rock, of Roxboro. And then I got the history of Roxboro, why Roxboro's called Roxboro, so, yeah, I, I, I think with the, with the additional funding, we should be able to, we should be able to complete all projects on schedule, on budget.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, um, what's the desire of the board?
Going forward with the recommendation from the Board of Education to allocate funding for, uh, for alternate by, of the ADA safety project.
Got a motion on the floor for approval. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we, uh, we noticed our auditor is in the audience at this time, so we'll revert back to item number two, presentation of annual comprehensive financial report. Ms. Hornberg?
Our auditor here is here to present the fiscal year twenty-three, uh, audit results, so I'm going to welcome him to the podium.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. You should have in your two packets, a smaller one that I'll use as a presentation summary, and if you'd be kind enough to flip over to page one of that. I do apologize, I was late, I got caught in a bad accident in Raleigh, took about an hour to clear, so I apologize for that. On page one, I'll let me back up and say this, the main thing you hire us to do as an audit firm is to issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We issued unmodified report, a clean report, so that's the main thing that you were after. And so having said that, on page one, there's three things under significant audit findings, accounting policies, accounting estimates, and disclosures in the financial statements. We were fine with all of those. On page two, were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter doc- dated October twenty-seventh. Were unaware that management consulted the outside accountants, auditors, et cetera. We had no financial findings, there were a few Medicaid findings on compliance, and no question costs related to those findings. On page four, I don't say these are all the key numbers in the audit report, but they are some of the key numbers and some of the key percentages you'd want to know, and then we put the four prior year's numbers beside it so you get some kind of context of each number. It's not just a number in space, so you can see total fund balance there in your general fund at forty-three million, four seventy-three. If you were to go back to two thousand and nineteen, that same number's twenty-eight point seven million. The unavailable fund balance is nine point six, committed and assigned is another nine point six. Total general fund expenditures is sixty-eight point one seven nine, and then fund balance available is forty-nine point five four percent. The importance of that specific number, if you ever go for the debt committee, et cetera, that's a really important number, and you can see from nineteen at forty-one point four one percent up to the current number, it's, uh, improved, which is really good. Unassigned fund balance at twenty-four million, one sixty-six, and unassigned fund balance at thirty-five point four five percent. Expenditures over and under, revenues over and under expenses before transfers and contributions, general funds a positive seventeen million, stormwater was a negative one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Total cash in your general fund is thirty-seven point two million, and cash other governmentals is thirty-eight point five, and cash in your stormwater is five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Again, fund balance in general fund is forty-three point four, other governmentals is twenty-one point eight, and, uh, fund balance in your stormwater is five hundred and seventy-three thousand. You can see your property tax rates there next, and then collection percentage at ninety-nine point four seven, as high as any of the five years shown. And then total prop- property valuation and levy amounts there are next, and then breakdown of your general fund revenues by department and general fund expenditures by department, with total general fund revenues at seventy-two point seven and total expenditures at fifty-four point eight. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five. Total fund balance there in blue shows a very nice trend upward, committed and assigned there in red, and fund balance there on the bottom in blue and group weighted average there in red. Sorry that it cuts off a couple of years ago, the LGC decided to change the way they were doing group weighted average to break it out, uh, in two, uh, sections rather than by groupings of closer to population, so it's either over a hundred million in budget or under a hundred million in budget, which doesn't provide a good grouping or comparison, if you will. Page six, uh, analysis of unassigned fund balance there on the top, and then revenues over and under expenses before transfers in your general fund and stormwater. See a nice trend in general fund, the stormwater is staying fairly flat across the board. Cash balances there and fund balances on the top in a pie chart, and underneath the actual numbers with total cash balances being seventy-six point three million and fund balances being sixty-five point nine million. You see your property tax rates next, uh, in blue and the group weighted average, uh, there in red. Same thing on collection percentages where you're beating the, uh, the group weighted average, and that's, uh, probably slightly above the statewide average there as well. On page nine, you can see the breakdown in a pie chart of the general fund revenue. The rea- and that's the reason why percentages of collection is such a big deal because, uh, ad lorm taxes make up almost fifty-five percent of the total revenue of the general fund. And then on the bottom, you can see where education, human services, and public safety make up the big items in the general fund expenditures. And I'm happy to answer questions you got of me today. I'm happy to take questions if you take your report home and read it on a cold rainy night and, uh, wake up the next morning and call me. You can call me anytime, perhaps not to be in the office. I ask them to give you my cell number, I'll get you an answer to your question. We appreciate you allowing our, our firm to do the audit.
Is the number provided on page one? Is that the office number?
Yes, sir.
So could you provide us your, or did you, we just call it a office and they?
It's nine one oh, six four one, seven seven, seven one is my cell number. Nine one oh, six four one, seven seven, seven one. You're welcome to call me anytime.
Thank you. Comments, questions, more members?
Thank you, sir.
Thumbnail version, uh, Person County. Finances are.
Good.
Good?
The main thing you really are looking for us to do, I mean, the finances are good, and the reason I pointed out that fund balance available, because that's a big percentage. Anytime the LGC, the state treasurer, the debt committee's looking at it, that's what they're looking at. The other big thing they look at is tax collection percentage. Both of those numbers or percentages are good. Then there were no findings on the finance side of that, that's the other thing they're looking for, so from an audit standpoint, it's very good.
So our approach to financing, uh, from this board, I, I believe is a stamp of approval that we're doing the right thing, we're being conservative, we're applying the funds where they almost needed for the benefit of our county citizens and, uh, good report. That's good. Okay, this is information only. No other questions?
Chairman, the, um.
Yes, sir.
If the Commissioners are satisfied, I believe the proper motion for the record is to accept the audit report. And before you do that, editorial comment from me, if I may. Independent auditors provide an essential public service for counties and municipalities, and more importantly, their citizens and taxpayers. There's not an abundance of firms across the state that do this work. It is a constant challenge, so on behalf of Person County and behind the local government's law firm, uh, represents, I want to thank Thompson Price for remaining able and willing to do this important work in the public interest.
We definitely appreciate your allowance to do it.
And I would add to that, the work of our finance department, um, Amy and her staff do a very good job of checks and balances to keep this board, uh, headed in the right direction and doing, doing the right thing. As I say frequently, we don't look good in orange, I, we don't want to go that route. But thank you very much, thank you. Yes, yes, sir.
I do have one, some comments on the audit. There was, uh, uh, one concern that came up during the audit, it didn't, it didn't warrant a finding per se, but it was, uh, a budget, um, uh, deficit that we had in one of the expenditure categories, which was a transfer to, from the general fund to the capital investment fund. That had to do with, uh, we, we received an excess amount of sales tax in July, August, and. That had to do with, uh, we, we received an excess amount of sales tax in July, August, and September that we accrue to the prior year. And it caused, as you know, we have a set aside amount that we do have to transfer to the CIF for schools to cover schools' capital and school debt. Because we received so much from July through September, more than what we anticipated, it caused that transfer budget to, it caused it to go over uh, between budget and actual expenditures. So, because of that, uh, and because it comes up as a financial point of concern, it's something that we will have to have you sign a letter to say you acknowledged that that occurred, and we have to, we're required to send that to the LGC. So you'll see that letter go around, uh, that I'll need for you to all to sign, I'll send that, but it's, it's not a major thing, it's just part of the LGC's requir- requirements that they have when a financial point of concern comes up, such as a budget deficit in an expenditure category. We are putting things in place to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future, so in June, we will, we will have to project what that sales tax is going to come in at to make sure that we have enough budget to cover that school transfer. So, I just wanted to mention that, so that wouldn't be a surprise to you.
It's naturally a procedural.
It is, it's very procedural, but it's nevertheless, it's something that's required, yeah.
We can, uh, I'll sign on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. With the advice of our attorney, then, we need to have a motion to accept this report.
Chairman, motion to accept the audit report as presented.
Motion on the floor, any further thoughts or questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, number, item number four, presentation by Caroline Hansley, Sierra Club. Ms. Hansley, uh, I ask that we've accepted the request for your presentation today and ask that that be, be brief. Mainly because we do have a public hearing coming up, and commissioners have been, I think, very well informed on this topic before, so, uh, good morning.
I have packets for you as well.
Thank you.
You know it's a theme this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thank you to the staff for helping me get my slides up, I really appreciate it. My name is Caroline Hansley, and, um, before I get started, just a couple of notes about what's in your packet, it's different than what's on the screen, I know that's also in your agenda packet. You have, um, information from the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources about some of the potential impacts to this project. You have a letter from the Center for Biological Diversity about endangered species impacts. You have petitions from Sierra Club members in Person County, and you have information from the Neuse Riverkeeper with Sound Rivers. As I said, I'm Caroline, thank you again for the time. I'm with Sierra Club, the country's largest and oldest environmental organization. We have millions of members and supporters across the country, including five hundred right here in Person County. Our members actually first reached out to us about this issue last month after nearby residents heard about the proposed facility for the first time themselves. They were scared, concerned, and had many questions. I'm here today to lay out some of what we know, questions we have, as well as concerns raised by landowners and residents who would be impacted by the proposed facility if it were to be built. Do I just say next slide, is that, or is there a clicker?
There is a clicker.
Great, and this way, or at that?
There's a left and right arrow.
It was upside down, thank you. There's no, there's no direction on this thing, okay, great, so thank you. Dominion's application to rezone a four hundred and eighty-five acre swath of southeastern Person County from in large part rural conservation, the least developed category of zoning, to general industrial for essentially heavy industrial use flies in the face of fundamental zoning principles of stability, predictability, and gradualism. The entire point of zoning is for business and citizens to have a sense of stability in the value of their land and security that the neighborhood won't change underneath them. Those values are aligned with Person County traditions and reflected in the comprehensive plan. We understand that this board has valued and cultivated its relationships with the utility industry as part of its core development and tax strategies, and we are not here to naysay that approach. However, this project, in this place, with this partner, is bad for Person County any way you slice it. This is not the place for this project. Person County has large areas zoned industrial, and in fact, has sites zoned industrial on the market, excuse me, on the market, of a size equal to this one. There would be no need for a rezoning application for this project in that location. Even rezoning a site adjacent to the areas currently zoned industrial would represent a level of predictability for county residents and consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is an about-face in zoning. If this land can be rezoned from rural conservation to general industrial for such a use, then no Person County resident or business can feel secure and must always wonder what out-of-character project could be approved right beside their biggest investment. And this is definitely not the partner for this investment. While we understand Duke Energy is a longtime valued partner for the county, Dominion is about to be purchased by a Canadian company. If the worst outcome, which we pray will never see, comes to pass, and there is some kind of industrial disaster on the site, the people of Person County will have to chase after a Canadian company for relief. This is also not the place for this project for other critical reasons. Currently, Dominion Energy supplies gas to three thousand homes and businesses in Person County. That is less than ten percent of the county population. When asked where gas from the Mariah Energy Center facility would be going, Dominion stated at the planning board meeting earlier this month that the, that this is used for mostly downstream customers outside of Person County, potentially for only a few days out of the entire year. In fact, people who currently live on Helena Mariah Road cannot benefit from gas from this facility because Dominion does not offer residential service to these residents. Questions we have, has Person County contacted other counties that have facilities like this in North Carolina to learn their real-life experience of how much taxpayer-funded expenses such facilities have incurred, as well as how much revenue was actually generated compared to what was promised? There are eight other liquefied natural gas facilities like this built in North Carolina, the latest one built in Robinson County in two thousand twenty. This part of the county is the wrong place for another reason. The nearby fire departments are almost all volunteer, Mariah, Timberlake, Allensville, as well as those in adjacent counties, including Bahama and Durham County and Bramble County. Speaking of our first responders, according to section seventy-two of the Person County Planning and Zoning Ordinance, quote, "Structures for light or heavy industrial uses must submit certification that proposed building height meets the ability of local fire and rescue teams to serve the facility." Certification in the form of a letter signed by the fire inspector, quote. Has a letter been signed by the fire inspector for a ten-story building of this kind? Of course, at this stage, to our knowledge, no site plan has been prepared, which makes it hard to wrap our heads around the scope of this project in the context of this community. According to section eighty-one of the Planning and Zoning Ordinance, commercial and industrial site plan requirements, a site plan shall be used to review the project's compatibility with its environment. There are twenty-six components to a site plan for this kind of rezoning. When will that be submitted for review if rezoning is granted on December fourth? Of particular note is that within the description of where and what heavy industrial zoning should be located, the ordinance specifically states, quote, "Heavy industrial uses are prohibited in residential, neighborhood, business, and rural conservation zoning districts." That was amended in two thousand and twenty. That highlights how incompatible the proposed rezoning is with the existing zoning and what an about-face it represents. Medical studies have shown chronic adverse health impacts from living near fossil fuel infrastructure projects such as sinus problems, throat irritation, nasal irritation, vision impairment, respiratory problems, and severe headaches. Contamination from plant activities can enter the air and groundwater in many different ways. For example, in two thousand eight, at the Huntersville liquefied natural gas plant, spent filter material, which is used to remove carbon dioxide from the gas line, was discovered buried on property adjacent to a gas line right-of-way. This area was found to have contamination almost ten years later from a groundwater monitoring report. This is also the wrong place for this project from an environmental viewpoint. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is the expert federal agency responsible for implementing the Endangered Species Act. The service has determined that the portion of the Flat River directly adjacent to the proposed Mariah Energy Site is occupied by the Neuse River Water Dog, the Atlantic Pigtou, and the Green Floater, all of which are either listed or proposed to be listed, threatened under the Endangered Species Act. For these species, the service has designated protected critical habitat in the portion of the Flat River, again, directly adjacent and downstream from the proposed project site. It is unlawful to take or harm a listed species without first obtaining an Endangered Species Act Section Ten Habitat Conservation Plan, which must be approved by the Fish and Wildlife Service. The definition of "take" includes harmed individuals of the species, as well as degradation of their habitat. County commissions, corporations such as Dominion, and individual people who make up these commissions and corporations are all subject to criminal and civil liability for any unpermitted taking of listed species. Criminal penalties for knowingly violating these protections include a year of incarceration and a fifty thousand dollar fine. Both the construction and the operation of this facility in this place poses harm to these endangered species. In your, in your packet, you'll see there is a chart summarizing the best available science on sedimentation impacts to downstream aquatic species. The first studies highlighted in the service chart indicate that significant sedimentation, such as from extensive blasting and site preparation for the proposed plant, can occur to aquatic species populations up to twelve miles downstream from the source. All of these species are very vulnerable to harm from the turbidity and sedimentation of their habitat due to construction and operation of a facility such as the Mariah Energy Center. The increase in impervious surfaces on the site would create a long-term increase in site runoff, increasing erosion, turbidity, and sedimentation problems. Designated and proposed critical habitat occupied these, by these species extends for many miles downstream from the proposed Mariah Energy Site, meaning sedimentation from the site would harm these species. Also, the Carolina Madtom is a species of fish that only lives in the Piedmont and coastal plain in North Carolina and is listed as endangered on the Endangered Species Act. According to the Fish and Wildlife Service, the proposed site for the Mariah Energy Center is squarely within the range of the Carolina Madtom. The service provides a website called Information for Planning and Consultation, or IPAC, for government bodies like the Person County Commission to determine which listed and proposed species require collaboration with the service to ensure their protection for a project at a particular location. For the Mariah Energy Center's location, the IPAC site states the Carolina Madtom, Neuse River Water Dog, Atlantic Pigtou, and Green Floater all may be affected by construction activities at this location, along with the critical habitat for the Water Dog and Pigtou. Thus, prior to any approval of the Mariah Energy Center, the Person County Commission, Dominion Energy, and their members and personnel must protect themselves from criminal and civil liability by generating a habitat conservation plan, in concert with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. While there is much more to be said about this project, I know I'm running out of time, so I'll wrap up. The current issue is zoning. To recap, it's the wrong project, in the wrong place with the wrong partner. Person County has better options. I ask you to stay true with your existing zoning and follow your comprehensive plan. As that document created with so much community input says in Guiding Principle One, implement growth management policies that direct development to growth areas, helping preserve prime agricultural and sensitive natural areas. To that end, we respectfully ask you to deny the requested rezoning and point Dominion to other parts of the county already zoned industrial if you wanna partner with them. The people of Person County deserve predictability in the evolution of the county zoning and deserve to feel secure in their homes. If you feel that you wanna consider this location anyway, despite the many problems I listed and others have, I urge you to hold off on voting on this rezoning application until the Unified Development Ordinance is finalized. And with that, I'll take any questions.
More questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you for your time, commissioners.
Item number five on our agenda is public property naming policy, Mr. Brian Hart.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
So I come before you today to present and share information related to a potential public property naming policy. It's a ver- fairly, uh, quick policy. However, I'm not gonna read it in its entirety, but I will, uh, provide an overview of some of the sections that it entails. The policy statement and purpose, which I will read, states that the Person County, Person County has the sole authority to designate the name of all public property and facilities. All county-owned property, buildings, facilities, and land shall bear such names as the Person County Board of Commissioners shall approve pursuant to this policy. The po- the purpose of this policy is to establish consistent, standard procedures and guidelines for the naming of public property, buildings, facilities, and land owned by the county. Uh, in addition to that section, there are four other sections, uh, within this policy. Uh, the policy guidelines, which primarily pertains to the periodic review, assessment, and implitation, implementation of the policy itself. Uh, a criteria for consideration, which is an overview of the typical reasons and or rationale that might warrant naming or renaming of public property. Uh, the process for consideration, which provides the acceptable instances of methods by which, uh, a public property naming request could come before the board. And then lastly, the guidelines for naming of property, which essentially outlines or details the steps that could be taken following the receipt of a request and leading up to a potential renaming of a county-owned facility or a property. Uh, this partic- this particular draft as before you has been reviewed by our county attorney and was, uh, prepared with the assistance of Parks and Recreation Department staff, namely John Hill and Jennifer Teasley. I just wanted to acknowledge them and their input as well. Are there any questions?
Questions, um, Mr. County, reviewed and approved?
Yes, sir, I did. My only, um, minor recommended change was to make it crystal clear that the, the board uh, now and in the future has sole authority, um, and has flexibility and discretion in the future.
That's number one, upfront.
And that change, uh, is reflected in the version that you all have within your agenda packet?
Yes. Comments?
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Then you, according to the recommendation to the landlord that gave us the access to, he wanted it named Sam's Way. I don't know, have, have we had any conversation over this?
No, that might take place later if we're, we're asked to approve this policy today, um, I guess that may be something, go ahead.
And just to clarify, that was the naming of the road?
Right.
Which is the entrance to the park, and that was approved at a board meeting. Our GIS director, Sally Bond, presented that item to the board, and it was approved.
Got you, thank you. The road only, which was, um, purchased.
We have an eas- we purchased an easement over the property, and, and that's what has been named, but the park itself has not been named.
The other comments or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt, we, uh, adopt the public property naming policy.
Have a motion on the floor, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, as for, um, chairman's report, a couple of things I think are, are of interest. Mainly from the economic standpoint, economic development standpoint, we do continue almost sometimes daily, if not weekly, economic development inquiries with EDC and this board, and, um, and most recently have included Duke Energy, and that is a continuing, um, discussion, you know, almost, almost weekly, it's, so it's constant. And as well as the mega park, there's continued, there continues to be, um, interest in that site, and we continue to negotiate, work with, and investigate the possibility of, of clients, client or clients there. I did attend, uh, an employee awards ceremony, which was, uh, a very good event for our employees, the longevity of, recognizing their longevity of five years to thirty years, uh, with fifty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay, forty-five people recognized there. And, uh, longevity is important, uh, it shows, um, uh, commitment of our employees, which we're very, very proud of, and, um, and that was, that was a great event to. was a great event to recognize and honor them. And there was a Farm-City Breakfast, which was a very good event, showing the cooperation between the city and farms throughout Person County, and very, very good, recognizing various participants, in particular, and to me of interest, children that were involved in, in an art contest there, promoting farm and farm life in Person County, and a very, very good event. That concludes my comments. Manager Kathy?
No report this morning.
Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone that came out this morning and gave a presentation. It's a very important topic, I understand that, and that I will consider everything that's been presented to us. And again, appreciate you coming out. And again, want to thank our finance director for the good job she's doing, and appreciate, actually, all our county employees for what they're doing. So that's it.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yes, Chairman Powell, I'd like to thank you all for coming and sharing your concerns. This is not done deal. They don't get angry yet. This was not just recently brought up. This has been going on for quite a while, but you guys have been coming to the meetings.
Which you found out now.
We have monthly meetings twice a month. If you look at the agendas, you can see what's going on. I mean, anyway. On my behalf, I did attend a Farm-City Week. It was a fantastic event. Room was packed, food was great, the smiles on those children's faces who won the awards for their posters. They had first, second, and third, and then first, second, and third runner-ups. It was a great event, although I had to leave early to go to work. Did support also recently Friday, Person Industries had a stew sale. Last I heard, they still had a little extra, which is unusual because they have a fantastic stew every year, and I'm pleased to contribute to them by buying and then donating extra funding towards Person Industries. And that concludes my report.
Again, Commissioner Perry?
And no report.
Commissioner Thomas?
No report.
Good. So do we have a motion to go into closed session? Number one, General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A five, and those permitted to attend would be County Manager Kathy, Clerk to the Board Michelle Solomon, County Attorney Alice Hemkins, and Finance Director Amy Warrenburg. Have a motion go in closed session?
Motion to go in closed session, number one. Chairman Powell?
Discussion. You and none, all in favor, say aye. A couple minutes, right, until you get...